Let's see, one, two, three, four, five. We have five. All right, how are we doing? Jody, can you hear me? Okay. Then let's call this meeting to order. It's the Central Vermont Career Center School District Special Meeting of November 18th, 2024. As far as I can see, we do have a quorum. So, um, do we have any guests? We all agree to be happy, pleasant, agreeable people. Do we have any public comments or correspondence for this evening? Jody, have you gotten any correspondence?
Okay, there we go. Here. No, I have not. We did get monitored by the AOE on Thursday of last week, so that we'll be talking more about that in our meeting in December.
Okay, very good. Um, I need, um, does every, has everyone seen the agenda? I need a motion to approve the agenda, please.
So moved.
Thank you, I need a second.
That net.
Thank you. Any additions or corrections to this agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Agenda is approved, we can go on to the consent agenda, which is the minutes of the of November 4th, 2024 meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, motion to approve that agenda? I'm sorry, to approve those minutes?
I'll move that.
I think, I need a second.
I'll second it.
Any comment, further comment on the agenda? Or, I'm sorry, the minutes, I'll get there. Um, all right, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. So now we have board discussion and action items, and the first piece for discussion is our budget. So Jody, I'll turn it over to you for budget.
And I'll turn it right straight over to Michelle, which she's super excited about. She's in the room with me. Also, Stephanie is here taking notes, and Carl is here listening in.
Okay.
Hi.
Take it away.
Most exciting night of the year, talking about the budget. Um, I hope everybody had time to review the information I sent. I know we had talked about how we come up with our budget, and how we come up with our tuition amount, and how that affects, um, other school districts and that sort of thing. So, one thing that I made sure to send to you was our projected tuition draft. That, um, looks like this. But essentially, how our, our budget is, um, a little more straightforward than local school budgets. We have our total expenditures, less all of our revenues, which is, uh, we get two large grants, one's a vocational educational support grant, and one is a state tuition reduction grant. Uh, we get a little bit of grant funding for our salary assistance, and then minus our business revenues, and that leaves us with a total amount we have to rate, be raised by tuitions. So we take that number and divide it by the FTEs, the amount of students we're able to bill for. That's based off the state semester average, so that's a period of over three years. They take a census in the fall and the spring, and they average those numbers all together. So, I'm anticipating next year, likely our FTEs, the number we'll be able to bill for for students is 194. Unlike other schools or local school districts, it's not a weighted average, it's a one-to-one ratio. So we're counting one student as one FTE. All students pay the same amount of tuition, um, no matter their needs or their program. A couple of things to kind of point out here, I'm still waiting on some numbers, but the base education rate, that's a rate that's given to us by the AOE. It's usually announced, last year I got the notification on December 1st, but of that base education rate, we automatically get 87% of that on behalf of our sending school districts. So, that comes directly to us, instead of going to the sending schools. Also, that base education rate determines the amount of state tuition reduction that we're gonna get, and that's 35%. So those are our two biggest grants. And again, those are based off numbers given to us by the AOE. And I anticipate, in the next two weeks, we'll get them. They're based on November 15th, um, CPI, which is a cumulative price index. So, any day now, I will get that number. It does tend to go up, but not substantially, maybe a few hundred dollars. Uh, so I don't, I mean, it will affect us, but, um, not substantially when we're talking about our overall budget. That's kind of just to go over our tuition. You know, we have our big number, minus our revenues, equals what we have to be raised by tuitions. Does that make sense to everybody, or does anybody have any questions on that? Again, it's really hard, we can't tell directly, sending schools, we can tell them, our tuition amounts, and they can give us an, and we can give them an estimate of what that's gonna do, but we can't tell them what it's gonna actually affect their, their tax rates on their local towns. We just, we wouldn't know. We don't know what their CLA rate is, we don't know what their weighted average rate is, we don't, there's so many things that we don't know. The ours is just a straight one-for-one, one student equals one FTE, and we bill what we bill for everybody. Guy, do you have a question for me?
Just a quick question. Taking a look at your method, methodology in terms of the tuition piece, because last year, we guessed a little high, and so we end up reimbursing the schools, or, you know, doing a different payment. So is your, is your, your piece on this to be conservative, or to be, what, what, how do you best guess without having the information?
So actually, so two years ago is when we overcharged tuition, and we did end up having to pay. This year, our preliminary numbers have come in, and we're within a $400 range of what we actually spend versus our, our tuition. Um, we can go over and under 3% either way, without having to reimburse or bill school districts. So that gives us a little bit of a buffer room. Really, we try not to announce or come up with a final decision until probably end of December, we can start guestimating what it's gonna be the beginning of December, when we start talking to school districts, but until I get those final numbers of the base education rate and, um, our number of FTEs, it's, it, we tend to hold off unofficially. So Jody usually starts meeting school districts in early December, and so we have this projection. We let them know this is what we think it's going to be, and then we don't finalize our tuition until January 15th, when we have all the numbers implied. And then we just have to do our best to expense, spend everything we're gonna say we're gonna spend, not go over and under, because in other words, that goes back to the sending schools.
Yeah, thank you.
So two other documents that I had sent, uh, one of them is FY '26 budget. That's, uh, the level services budget, that really only, that includes the knowns, those are the knowns. I know healthcare costs are going to go up, and I have those numbers, so those are, again, not official until the board, uh, the Vermont Health Initiative Board accepts them. But again, they usually don't change, they're all set. As well as some preliminary costs of other things that are going to be increasing. So my budget, the FY '26 budget, with a 9% increase, is, that is level services, not, not closing programs, not opening programs, not spending any extra money on anything we may need. This one? Yep. Not including any kind of deferred maintenance costs, or anything else that we may need. This is absolutely level services, if we keep it as is, less the amount of what our contract, our, um, CBAs, our negotiations. I do not have, we have an exchange proposal, so I have no idea where to put in, what to put in for numbers on those, but based off everything else, we can, we're looking at at least a 9% overall increase to our budget. When I put that number into our projection, our projected tuition draft, that did increase our tuition about 7.2% overall, and about $1,359 to each, to the school districts for each student that they will be sending to us. So again, 9% is, is level funding with a, and that'll increase the tuition about 7.2%. Yep. Lyman?
Question?
Do you, um, do you have any idea how that 9% is reflected in other, other districts, or anything like that?
We're just starting budgeting season, so I'm not exactly sure where people are gonna land, but, um, I anticipate because of the increase in health insurance, very likely everybody's gonna be seated. Unless they cut staff, double-digit increases to their budgets. There's just no way to get around it, when you have health insurance increases the way that we have the past, I think, three years, it's been double digits. This year it came in a little bit lower than anticipated, it actually 11.9%, where last year it was 16.9%. So, lower than last year, but, you know, it's quite substantial when you're talking about a family plan. You know, on the district's 80% of that.
Is that, is that our biggest increase, is the health insurance?
It is, overall. Individual budget lines, some things that have increased was, of course, our library or media services, basically all of our contracted services through BUUSD. Those are really hard to budget for, considering we pay a percent based off what their budget passes as. So we don't, we didn't know last year exactly what to budget for, for a couple of reasons. One, we took over more space in the middle of the year, or towards the end of this year. And also, because again, their budget didn't pass until two months ago. So we really, it's hard to anticipate, are they gonna be budgeting for facilities a dollar per square foot, a dollar twenty-five? It's not based off actuals. So you'll notice, this year it does look like there's double-digit increases in those contracted services, but it's based off the actuals that I'm looking at when we get billed for it today. You know, this, this quarter. I'm forecasting that next year it'll be probably about 5% more. So besides health insurance, our contracted services are increasing. Then the next thing I shared with you was kind of our wish list, it's called the director's draft. And that's, again, when I have Jody put on her director's hat, stop thinking like a superintendent, and we kind of throw out all the ideas of, what's everything we want, we need, what this district could use. There are notes on the right-hand side, um, but, you know, our biggest, some of our biggest addresses are, are program improvements. There's some equipment needs that need to be replaced, either now, or, you know, before we move into a new center, or, um, just some things that we've been putting off, per se. Also, if we decided to increase any kind of programming, we would need to have an additional lab assistant. Right now, we have four, and what our lab assistants are, are basically, uh, they're substitutes in the working classrooms, and if we have more programs, we will need another one to support the students.
They also support when co-op students are here. Guy, you sent an earlier question about, um, some of the programming and the numbers, and most of our programs have a cap, so auto, all the heavy trades, they have to, they have a cap at 16 students with one teacher. If you go over that, you need to make sure that you have someone else there. So if we were to take more students in, into the regular program, then we would need a lab assistant assigned completely to that program. If we take extra that are co-op students, and they're only in there one day a week, then we need someone assigned to that program half-time. So 50% of the time, even though the kids are there one day a week. This also has, the wish list has the, if baking arts moved off-campus, so that we could take in more baking arts and more culinary arts students. It has some of the, um, I think Michelle already said, some of the bigger items that instructors told us were coming up, that needed to be done.
Increased tuition for VTSU for our EMS 2 that I anticipate.
Can you base that tuition assumption off of the, this year, five students? Not, not if we have more students, because that would also increase the cost.
Five.
Guy?
Yeah, so, um, so Jody, I have a question about the baking arts. I kind of asked this last time, but I, I think I wanna ask it a little bit differently. So when I look at the numbers in terms of, uh, you know, plus or minus, I know you, you said the rationale for moving off-site would be potentially to have more students, but if I look at the numbers right now, uh, it doesn't seem that we're reaching the maximum capacity. And maybe I'm not, uh, reading it correctly, and maybe I'm not understanding that maximum capacity maybe is not available where we are right now. So, I guess, number one, that's my question. Number two is just a, a statement, because I think I said last time, it wasn't, it doesn't seem all that long ago that baking arts was, was offsites, and, uh, and one of the reasons we brought it back in, I believe, was that, you know, they just were not getting numbers. I mean, if I, if I remember correctly, the last year was like, you know, five kids. So, I, I'm trying to, I'm trying to wrap my arms around that particular one, because, uh, that, that's a significant increase in terms of, you know, what we're giving to that program.
If we, um, you might not have noticed it, because Program Quality had the documents that showed applicants and admissions data, and then they had the, um, what does it cost for the program with the, how much would we need to break even, sort of thing, the program analysis. And there were 30-plus applicants for both culinary and baking arts, but because they're both merged in that same small kitchen space, we have, we are at capacity with those two programs right now. We have a total of 15 students in both, which is all we can fit in those small spaces. So if we were to pull one out, we would be able to have potentially 14 to 16 in both programs separately. But we can't do that in the space that they're in right now. So, we, we have seen an increase in applicants in those programs, guys, since they moved it back on campus. It still might not be enough to, um, make it worthwhile for us to find a place to renovate and rent.
Yeah, I mean, that kind of segues into my projected program analysis. And again, early projections, just kind of something to look at. I have the FY '25 budget and tuition, the number of students we have currently enrolled, and our break even. So then if I'm looking at next year, again, the budget that I'm using is the budget of, of level services. So, the original budget. This isn't the wish list, this isn't adding anything, moving programs, adding programs. This is truly level services. And based off that, we can estimate our tuitions just over $20,000. And so you can see I have the max number of students that could possibly be enrolled in these programs. So, total students, including co-op students, if, if that's the max, you can see the break even. And some of the programs, even if they were fully enrolled, just can't break even. And two of those are baking and culinary. And again, it's because they have a max where they are, they can't, they can only enroll so many students in the space that they're in, but they need X amount of students to break even. So, you can, sorry, excuse me. You can see that. But you can see some of the other programs too, how, what they would need to do in order to break even. Everybody needs to be fully en- enrolled.
And then that, that also doesn't show some, so the emergency services too, it's based on the five students, that's what the overall cost is. But if VTSU and we can't come to an agreement, and we had 12 students, the cost of VTSU tuition would be much greater than what's in there for the formula. And so that, there would not be a break even possibility on that program.
Right.
Simply because, so, in the past, and always, there are some programs that carry the weight of other programs.
Lyman, you have a question?
Uh, yeah, on the, on the baking and culinary, so for the FY '26 max number, we have 14 and 14, uh, with the break even of 16 and 15, is there, was there a reason that they couldn't be 16 and 15?
They can't, even if they didn't-
If, if we went offsite?
No, we could have 16 and 15 if we went offsite with one of them, but that cost of going offsite is not in there.
Right. Does that make sense? Those are my numbers, not those.
So that's, that's the, like, current cost.
Right, so then the break even's gonna be more like 18 and 17, or something like that.
Correct. And it's kind of interesting, is if I were to use our current enrolled students, and kind of put it in that max number of students, if it, if I, if we kept the same number of students, and I put it in for next year, you're hearing about the same programs again and again, that just aren't quite meeting the number of students that they need. And that includes, you know, medical professions, EMS 1 and 2, baking and culinary, digital media 2, and design and fabrication. Those are our programs in which, if they carried their enrollment forward, which they have this year, they wouldn't be able to break even. And again, like Jody pointed out, we don't expect everybody to break even. There are some programs, um, that are gonna just, like, cosmetology to lower cost, so they can carry more students, and they can help those, support those other programs. So it's not that we're asking for that, it's just some of these numbers. You know, emergency services needs eight, would need 18 students to break even. And digital media 2 would need 15 students, design and fab would need 15 students. We've never had the enrollment.
We actually can't have that.
Yeah, we, some of them we can't have, and others based off previous, it's just... You know, and we can talk about the programs, kind of, we'll always, we'll continually be talking about the programs, but kind of back to our budgeting. Thoughts, comments? What direction is the board wanting to go?
Lyman?
I guess, the way that I'm looking at this, is we have this bracket of 9% of level funding and 20 whatever percent for the director's budget, and we need to be somewhere in the middle. And it would be helpful to have some sort of idea of priority. Because I don't know that we can make the, the distinction that HVAC should get this, and cosmetology, cosmetology should get that, or whatever. Is that something that's possible?
Maybe. I think we would prefer a target number, like, what's the percentage the board wants us to bring forth?
For our next board meeting. And, and then we can make some decisions based on that, and it'll be prioritized, and then the board can say, "Great, thanks for this prioritized list and this budget that you brought. We agree with this, this, and this, and not this," and so we're gonna shift that.
But we want, basically, from this meeting, we need your recommendation on where are we aiming? Where are we aiming at getting the general census of of the, I mean, the board's priorities? Do they think that we should make it a priority to move places offsite? Do they think it's a priority to support programs that need heavy support? Or do they think it's more, should we be investing this money in current programs, and...
And one of the, um, things that Program Quality asked, um, Alice, they gave Alice and I some jobs to do. And so one, for me, was to reach out to Vermont State University again, and see if we can find some sort of happy medium for our tuition for our paramedicine. Because it is the only one in the state, and that's really important. And so we have reached out, we had a preliminary meeting with a small group of people who don't get to make the decisions. We have another meeting that's, we've been trying to schedule, and we got everybody except one of the decision-makers at the table for this Friday. So now we're looking at, right after the Thanksgiving break, and trying to get everybody there. So we're, there's been response to the, "We're gonna have to cut this program if you guys aren't working with us." But we don't have an answer yet. So I think that will help us as well.
And I don't have an answer yet from the, um, who is going to be in, on Senate Ed as yet. Some of the previous members seem to be asking to have that, to be reinstated into that committee, but there's no one for sure. But my task was to discuss how, why the, um, government, the legislature isn't providing significantly more finance for the students to go to the colleges without trying, without the Career Center losing money. And they don't seem to know about it. They didn't seem to know that that even is a, a, a situation that we're dealing with. So it, it's at least been brought to their attention.
I think they forget every year, we were there. But I also would say that there are a few of our local legislators who have told me they're coming to the open house, so hopefully we can bend their ear a little bit this Thursday night.
Okay, good. I'll be there.
It also appears that, from, um, listening to folks at the, uh, Vermont School Board's Association Conference, that it looks like the lowest that any district is probably able to put forth will be about, about 11%. And no one's really, um, sure that even they, they could make that mark.
You know, another point to that, another in, cost increase that we had discussed last year, but just to bring it up again this year, is we have that childcare tax that is, uh, 0.11%, and, and for a small district like us, it still costs us about $40,000. So I can't imagine these large districts that, that cost that came on July 1st, that it was really hard to budget. I mean, you don't budget for it, it was really, it kind of came fast.
Sorry, Alice, um, this is Guy, I don't know if my, I don't know if this is my right brain or left brain, but let me try something. So, you know, in listening to Jody, it, it sounds like there are gonna be some changes at some point. But, uh, as we all know, if there are gonna be changes, they probably are not gonna be immediate, would be my guess. I, I, I'm thinking that, they're probably, if there are gonna be changes, they're probably at least a year away, but I could be wrong from, from that perspective. And we're still catching up with our, uh, our student rates of the, you know, the three-year average, so, uh- So, uh, we, we won't fully benefit from that until, is it next year, Michelle, or the year after?
From the, in, the new programs, about three years, so.
Yeah. So it, it certainly seems to me that, you know, somewhere between, you know, what our increase is and 11% is, is a reasonable, you know, is a reasonable increase and, and might find some space for what Lyman was talking about in terms of, you know, pieces of the wish list. And, you know, I certainly would need to hear more about that, but, um, that's just my initial thought right now without knowing the whole lot.
So your suggestion was a between nine and 11, like comeback with an 11% budget increase to share? Was that...
Um, I'm, I'm, I wasn't suggesting that, but I'm, I'm, I'm thinking that based on what I, I'm looking at and based on what I'm hearing, that, you know, that certainly would be, um, it, it wouldn't be outrageous, I don't think. But, um, but, but I don't know what outrageous is anymore because, you know, certainly the populace has spoken and, um, you know, they're, they're certainly keeping an eye on things.
Jason, is that, do you have a question?
Well, yeah, I was just double checking, what time's the open house? 5:30?
5:30.
Okay.
5:30 to 7:30 on Thursday night.
Okay, we've got a newly elected House rep that I'm gonna ask if he'd like to join us.
Awesome, thank you.
Lyman?
Michelle, what was our, um, increase last year? Percentage?
Double digits, but let me go back and double check.
It was 11.3%. And that increased our tuition. We actually had a substantial gain in FTEs last year, uh, almost, I don't know, 15 kids. So it actually only increased our tuition by 0.8%. But our overall budget increase was 11.3.
Scott?
Yeah, can y'all remind me, um, do the individual towns vote on the, um, on the CBCC budget separate from their own? And I, Jody, I'm seeing, or sorry, Michelle, I'm seeing your head nod. And did, did any towns vote down the CBCC budget?
Do not know and we don't, it doesn't matter what individual towns say, as long as overall, they, there, the majority passes it. So across our 18 towns, it passed. Um, so I can't say if a town might have voted it down, cause we don't, we don't get that information. We get them all together. Um, it is a separate budget that is voted on and then, but I always try to remind everyone that it's embedded in your budgets too, because that's, it's not money on top of what their school district is spending. It's already embedded in there, they're just saying, yes, we agree, this needs to go to the career center.
So to piggyback on that, so once everybody agrees, you know, as a collective, that our budget is passed, the sending schools are legally obligated to, to, to honor that and pay us their tuition. And so they have to budget for it. So if ours passes and Montclair's doesn't, they still have to, ours, they can't negotiate with us about our tuition. Our tuition is separate and they are obligated to pay once it's passed.
Gotcha, thank you.
Does someone else have a hand up?
Lyman, you're back.
All right, I promise this will be the last time, not really, but I'm promising anyway. Um, if, if you had to say, Jody, this is a tough question, but if you had to say, last year we did some innovative things, cause we wanted to include design and fab and ultimately, um, welding and whatnot. Would you say that if we made some changes for next year, they would be innovative changes or maintenance changes? And, and the reason that I'm asking this is I think we need that as a rationale or a justification for an equal or slightly larger budget increase. You know, if we say that we need to go up to 13% because all of a sudden we're gonna open up the doors for a whole bunch of programs, I think that's a saleable thing. If it's just to maintain, then not necessarily.
I'm not opening any new programs next year. And so nothing brand new, no changes. However, we may be running the, um, design and fabrication program, which has an expense because it's a granite museum, um, piece. And we may be running emergency services too again. And those have, those are hard to predict, cause it depends on the numbers, right? But they're gonna cost more, um, and they're important because both of them are the only ones in the state. And so in a way, it's innovative that way, but it's really a maintenance budget. There is, based on our discussion in program quality last time, there is a discussion about if we do not have enough applicants to run either one of those programs, would we then shift the funds and open a second building trades, for example? Um, and how could we do that? And so it would be trying to make sure we get in as many students as possible, um, through our doors, not to take, not to take less students, but how to do that and what does that look like? And so that would, that's gonna be based, a decision that we would have to base on the first round applications, which we won't see until the end of December. So we need to set the budget before then.
Guy?
So, so, so Jody, you just, just led me to, I guess, ask another question. If we opted to expand or open up, or, let's see what, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? Uh, start another, uh, series of the same program, would, would those be eligible for Perkins money?
I don't think so. I don't think so. Um, it, the Perkins money is sort of limited anyways, but the, what we have in Perkins can stay in Perkins, Perkins for perpetuity. So those salaries that we have in there, we can keep in. Whereas if you start a new program and you put a teacher in there, you have to take them out after four years. So I think we're good as far as what's in Perkins. Um, unless we decide not to continue the equity scholar or for some reason we didn't wanna continue the integrated academics pieces, that, then we'd be talking about something different. Having a building trades, a second building trades or a second electrical is more about finding a way to be flexible within our, either extending our school day, um, which could cost more money, or trying to figure out how to use the classroom and workshop spaces at different times, we're within the same, um, schedule that we have now. So trying to figure out how we could use those resources with twice as many kids. And it, it'll be complicated, but it's something worth thinking about.
Thank you.
So is there any other additional discussion or questions regarding the budget? So what is, so Jody, our, our plan is to, um, give you, what you need from us tonight is some kind of a percentage that, and then you'll come back with a budget that reflects that?
Yes, what's our target in, increase for the budget?
Does anyone have any other suggestions other than 11% maximum?
15? 11 to 15?
Guy?
Guy, you're muted. Guy, I think you're talking, but you're muted.
I've been accused of that many times. Uh, so the 11% would not include any negotiated salaries, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so I just wanna throw that out there. Uh, because, you know, the 11% is, is, you know, you know, the healthcare increases, which is not, not chump change by any, by any means.
Right.
Uh, if you think we're not gonna, uh, have a negotiated salary, uh, agreement, then we're all smoking something we shouldn't be. So just putting, just putting the figure in context, how's that?
All right, so are we, are we gonna, uh, stop there at, at 11? Or Lyman, you're back?
I think I'm much more comfortable with like 13 and, and then we could come back to 12 or 11 or something if we had to. If we're at 11, we don't have any room to, to play.
If you're at 11, you're talking about level services with the negoti, new negotiated contracts. That, they're not much of anything else, that 2%.
I, I kind of agree with Lyman. I mean, out of the gate, I was a little bit higher even, but I think 13's a good number.
Okay. Any other comments for the board? So shall we leave our, our business people and our director with 13 as a target?
Just for the record, I'd like to go higher than 13. I'm just afraid that, that won't fly.
Okay. Well, I'm looking for suggestions from other members.
I just heard, I just heard around 13, which, which could be above or below. Um, Lyman, you're, there you go.
Okay.
Well, I guess, I guess, I guess what I would add is, is, I mean, there's nothing that's gonna bind us to that. And I think, you know, at this point, we're all struggling to try to figure out from a programming standpoint, you know, what are the best options for kids? And I, I, I think that's the way we gotta think of this. And, um, you know, we can always, you know, we can always make adjustments. It's, it's, it's always easier to come down than it is to go up, you know? Um, so I would certainly, I'd be, I'd be okay with greater than that.
So maybe a couple more. I mean, this is first draft and it, basically I gave you level services to the very max. So maybe we'll come in and kind of, just kind of piece it out maybe and say, okay, if you did this, this is a percent, if you did this, it's a 2%, if you did this. So maybe I can make it a little bit easier. Visually, of, you know, like, okay, here's our base, and then you can add on. Okay.
We need a budget game?
Yeah.
Like a computer game, if I choose this and not this, what do I get?
Look at my head, it's so great.
Next to him.
Yeah. He just has to get it on with that.
So are we comfortable with moving forward with a, a 15% increase to be reviewed? All right? Okay, so let's, let's, uh, leave it at that and let our, um, building personnel, school personnel come back and see what we can work with.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you. Now, um, Jody, the real estate contract.
So, um, as you know, our initial first choice is not available and the next up or the next at the top of the list, um, choice, they're wanting to talk and to negotiate a potential price for their property. And, um, David Epstein from Two X Cullens recommended that we find a Realtor that we could work with, who could help us, um, with the market value of the land. And so the contract there is for that purpose. Um, it has been sent to legal counsel, but they have not let us know yet, um, what they, if they approve of it. So I guess if you, um, take the action to approve us having Alice sign this, as long as legal counsel says yes, then we would be able to move forward with it.
Something that I had a question about, um, what if the whole scene changes and the plan changes and we, we as a district are not going forward with any kind of a land purchase? Um, is there anything, I didn't see anything in that contract, but I wanna be absolutely sure that the real estate agent, um, is there some kind of entitlement that they would be, um, allowed to bill us for, for any services? If, if all of a sudden we decide not to go forward with any kind of a land purchase? I think that's important.
Um, Alice, do you remember, and maybe Guy also, when you, as BUUSD members, did this C building, that purchase agreement? Same Realtor for BUUSD at the time? Um, I don't know if you remember how that worked. She's aware that, um, all we need right now is market value. Uh, are any of you Realtors, could we just go with one of you? Just checking. Okay, um, and, uh, then if we do sign an agreement, that would, the legal counsel's gonna draw that up for the MOU for the land owner. So this, she's not gonna necessarily be doing that part. Um, and she, I don't know what else we would have her do. So the ask of the legal counsel was, this is what we need it for. Can you review this document and see if it's appropriate?
Yeah.
So if, if he says, if Mark McDermott says yes, then I would love for us to be able to move forward. I'm supposed to meet with the property owners on Wednesday morning. Uh, but if he does not, then I understand we will not move forward with that piece and I can still meet with them and say, we're just not ready yet.
Right. Cause he, here's my fear, that we could end up with a contract for a piece of land for a, and, and a bond that doesn't fly. And that would be a problem.
Well, it, the, the MOU for the piece of land, that's not what this is for. That would be-
That would be something that our lawyer draws up, once we haven't agreed upon price. And we would basically pay an amount down, that the land owner would get to keep no matter what. And the rest of it would be, um, based on whether or not that bond would pass. So if it didn't pass, they get to keep that down payment and the MOU is null and void.
That's a separate agreement.
That's a separate agreement.
Okay. Sure.
Alice, that signature is looking even more important. Uh, Jody, uh, a little more intel for you maybe, uh, to, uh, to leverage an angle. So I believe the owner is, uh, of the graduating class at about the time the career center opened. Uh, and also was an attendee of the career center. Uh, so I think his name across, above the front door, uh, in turn for donating the property would be an amazing gift. And it would, and, and the other thing is it would relieve Alice of having to worry about signing the damn thing. Cause he's, he's for giving Alice a gift. But anyway, a little intel.
Yes, and, um-
Their only property right now and they're going to have to move and find a new home. So I'm not sure that they have the capacity to just donate it to us, but I appreciate what you're saying.
Yeah, I mean, I see this as, you know, we paid for a wetlands delineation, so we had information, right? And this is the same, like, we need to find out what these people are thinking for a price. Um, and we need to know what would be fair. And we need to know what would be fair for ourselves, right? And so, I don't know how, any other way to get around that, really.
Okay. Well, I'm, I have a pen and a telephone. Lyman, you have a question?
Do you need a, do you need a motion? Is that what you're asking for? So a motion to allow Alice, upon approval by the lawyers, to sign this contract?
Yes. That's what I need. All right, so Lyman has made the motion for the chair to sign this contract based upon approval by our counsel.
I'll second that, Guy.
There you go.
Any discussion? Right, hearing no discussion, I need a vote. All those in favor indicate by either saying aye or doing a thumbs up.
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing no opposition, motion carries. So we'll go forward with after, after legal review. And the, the contract is with Heaney Real Estate. All right. Any further business that needs to come before this board at this... All right, then we'll need a motion to adjourn.
I just wanna remind you that our next board meeting, December 9th, is gonna be at Harwood. So we'll be hosting our meeting at Harwood Union High School in December.
And we'll get a notice of what place that is, where it is in Harwood?
Yep.
What room and all that?
It's in the library.
In the library, okay, very good. Then, we will... We will adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, hearing no opposition, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone, for taking the time out of your evening.
I'm back on census.